Maybe if we start on time, we can get closer to finishing our time. Good morning, everybody. Glad you are here. Christie will not be with us today. Apparently, getting her hair done was incredibly important. No, actually, I think part of it stems from, in her mind, we thought we might be doing a funeral this week, but it's looking better. So, we're happy about that. Let's bow our heads for an opening prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to be together to study Scripture, to see a new understanding of those final moments of Jesus' life. Help us to benefit from this, Lord, so that we might have a fuller understanding of what you would have us do and say when we follow Him. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. So, I should've said this last week as we were ending, but I didn't. It is important, as we're studying a particular gospel, to just kinda stick with it, because it's real easy to let your mind wander and say, "Well, wait a minute, what happened to such and so?" Well, if it's not printed in your Bible, it didn't happen in this gospel, and therefore, it doesn't concern you at this particular moment in time. That will be even more important next week. When you do your reading for next week, stick strictly with Mark, and let me extend that a little further. Most of you are gonna open your Bibles, and you're gonna see that Mark has anywhere from eight to sixteen, that is, to twenty verses. Don't read anything past eight. Just treat it like it's not even there. It's not what's assigned to you, as you probably saw when you were reading this. What's assigned is Mark sixteen, one through eight. And that's what we'll be dealing with, and there's a reason for that, so, anyway. Today's reading is Mark's recanting of the crucifixion of Jesus, which is why it picks up immediately after his tri- Mark's recounting of the trial of Jesus before Pilate. Now, this story is very stark, very gloomy and dark. And in the other three Gospels recounting of the crucifixion of Jesus, there's a lot of talking by Jesus. In Mark's recounting, Jesus says almost nothing. And there's a reason for that. So, let's begin. This story is familiar, but like most Scriptures, it never becomes so familiar that you don't get something new from it. And so, if you walk out of today's session thinking, "Well, I'm not sure I ever really thought of it that way," that's a good thing. Because we harmonize our knowledge of the Gospels, which has its pluses, it has its minuses. Today, it's a minus if we miss the stark message that Mark is delivering. I gotta come up with a better word than stark. It's a tongue twister with Mark, so, anyway. Like the story of the nativity, excuse me, unlike the story of the nativity, the story of the cross implicates us. On the day that Jesus was born, we just sit by and receive the marvelous news along with everyone else. But on the afternoon that Jesus died at exactly 3:00 P.M. after three hours of sustained darkness, darkness being physical darkness, we are rich with guilt as deeply as if we had swung the Roman mallet. We have placed Jesus' horrifying end at the center of the apostles' creed to sound a reverberating death knell for innocence. This is the quote he's referring to. "Suffered, crucified, dead, buried, descended." If we fail to come to grips with our complicity in this dark center of human existence, we will not comprehend our salvation. Only upon our owning the cross can the great glad tidings that have been peeling our liberty all along begin to be heard. In one of his parables, Jesus talks about the servant, two servants, and he says, you know, "One is forgiven a little, and he's a little thankful, and one of them's forgiven a lot, and he's a lot thankful." And I think what Dr. Dibbert is trying to tell us there is, it's only when you really comprehend the fullness of your sin that you can comprehend the fullness of the forgiveness. And the crucifixion, we, of course, put back at the turn of the first millennium. And yet, don't we, in some ways, all through our lives, crucify Jesus on our own? So, you can say, you know, it's like a lot of terrible tragic sins throughout the history of human beings. We always like to say, "Well, that wasn't me, I wasn't there." Well, yeah, maybe that's true, but it's also true you kinda are there at various times in your life. If it's a proactive thing, yes, and if it's a sin of omission, that happens too, you know. One of the things that, without getting into a lot of detail, one of the things that still bothers me to this day was I was in a situation in a church, in a church fellowship hall, where something was said that I knew was just incredibly wrong. I didn't say it, I didn't laugh at it, but I didn't say anything against it. One person that night sinned an act of commission, and another person sinned that night with an act of omission. So, I'm not sure that one's any worse than the other. Okay, let's take a look, a quick overview of what happens here. We pick up just as, well, I'm back up even a little further. Last week, we ended our narrative with Peter's denial. Peter, of course, serves as the test case for the disciples' faithfulness. Already, the eleven had, or the ten at this point, had wandered away, had gone off and hiding. But even Peter, who follows Jesus to the high priest's house, fails by denying Jesus. Mark now proceeds in his narrative of the cross to remove everyone else from the company of Jesus. I'm gonna read that again. "Mark now proceeds in his narrative of the cross to remove everyone else from the company of Jesus." Mark's account of the crucifixion is a litany of abandonment in which he vividly portrays the aloneness of Jesus in death. You would remember from your reading of this passage, the sparseness of it, the missing characters that we're used to in this story of the crucifixion. But again, the lack of con- there's not- in the other crucifixion stories, there is what we have conversation. What is a conversation? It's when I say something, Janet says something back to me, I might say another. It can be as simple as I say something to Janet, she says something back to me. That's a conversation. What's a monologue? That's when one person says something, and there is no reply. This crucifixion story is a bunch of monologues that are all strung together, because the people that are railing at Jesus aren't looking for an answer, they're just making a statement. And the centurion makes a statement. Even Jesus is not conversing with anyone, he makes a statement. So, that alone is a huge difference from the other recountings of the crucifixion. And maybe, if you think about it, it's more realistic. People usually have conversations just to communicate information to one another. Sometimes, when people do monologues, it's a, it's to reinforce their thinking. They're not looking for a response, because your response, my challenge, which I have already just stated, is the fact. And of course, that would lead to a different kind of conversation, which we normally term an argument. "Don't tell me what I'm thinking, I just told you what I'm thinking, and I'm not looking for anybody to try and change my mind." Okay. What immediately strikes us in Mark's crucifixion narrative is how jammed it is with ridicule. Every figure surrounding Jesus here at the end, with the exception of God and the women, can be construed as mocking Jesus. Through it all, the defendant remains silent. I know you're already thinking of something, hold on to that, I promise we'll get to it. So, for Mark, when Jesus goes to the cross, he goes alone. Why does that fit perfectly with our understanding of what the crucifixion is really all about, anyway? But what else? Yes, it's him. It's not us at this point. It's him. He is doing it. Even the, as we will see in his own statement, there seems to be a quietness from God that is almost unbearable for us. Does anybody, well, let me just reverse it, say it the other way. I have no doubt personally that if Jesus had wanted to come off the cross, he could've come off the cross. That was not the way in which this was gonna work. And had he come off the cross, then the whole process fails. Okay, but he's doing it alone. So, let's pick up where we pick up today. He has just been before Pilate. Pilate has made his pronouncement. He's flabbergasted with the crowd and has Jesus flogged. As if the miscarriage of justice in the capital sentence of the Messiah is not glaring enough, Mark proceeds to fill Jesus' final moments with ugliness beyond imagination. Yet whatever is thrown at him, he receives without a word. How can this possibly be? Pilate's own farewell lashing of Jesus should've satisfied even the foulest lust. How many of you saw, what was it, Mel Gibson's movie from years ago? Very, very graphic, flogging, but probably pretty accurate. It wasn't flogging like we think of it, it was a scourging. So, the flog was embedded with barbs and sharp things. And, you know, literally, it didn't just lash the skin, it ripped the skin open. Obviously, it'd be very easy for someone to die simply from being flogged in such a manner. And he's right, that alone, incredibly painful thing, should've been enough to satisfy anybody. And yet, it only seems to heighten the savagery of what then goes on to take place. Even the Roman soldiers, stagehands who in no way stand to benefit from Jesus' humiliation, have plotted their little ritual of insult. What is it about Jesus Christ that elicits such vengeance? Okay, we hear fear. Anybody else?
I've looked at it as the more the soldiers' severity of the punishment got, the happier Satan was.
Okay.
And running Satan would add to the savagery, because he wanted him to hurt, he wanted to make it just almost impossible to sit there and withstand and walk the road.
Anybody else?
You're asking why they did it?
Why, why, let me put it another way. This is not their first rodeo. They've crucified people before.
He wouldn't yell or scream or-
It's just another day at the office for them, y'all. And let's face it, there'll be another one sometime in the near future. You can't get, but so invested in these things, because you just wear yourself out. But this time, it's a show. This time, it is as if they're taking out some kind of hostility on him that doesn't normally happen.
But Jesus had preached to the people, and he had told them that the scribes and the Pharisees, you know, were hypocrites. And he had told them that the Romans were not in charge, both was. And so, they had this kinda personal hatred toward him, because he was anti them, you know.
Yeah, could be. It could be. The Roman soldiers, well, let me just use the words that he uses. "They have obviously planned this, for they summon the whole cohort to the spectacle." They don't need the whole cohort.
All the good soldiers.
That's everybody, all the soldiers. It's like, you know, "Whoa, we got something planned here, y'all come see this." So, "The soldiers costume and salute Jesus as they would the Caesar. Hail to thee, O king of Israel, of the lineage of David." That's verse eighteen. A staff? The crown? A robe? They don't do this to everybody. They wouldn't have time. We-
They're not important enough to do this.
Oh, no. And listen, I know it's so easy to segmentize these things. There are two other people that they're waiting to also crucify. They didn't put crowns on them, or robes, or staffs. They didn't do any of this stuff to them. It ought to be just another day at the office, but it's not. It's not.
You think it's because there was a larger crowd? Larger crowd?
You know, yeah, I heard, I heard. I don't, I don't know.
Put on a shield for the crowd and reinforce them?
No, no. We know that's not the case, because they take everything off him before they bring him back into public. This is for them alone. Now, maybe they were thinking, "Oh, if this guy thinks he's a king, we'll show him." But still, it's above and beyond the call of duty. Wait a minute, one at a time. David?
It probably wasn't a picnic to be a Roman soldier in Israel. I mean, I read also that, well, they had insurrections repeated once.
Yes.
And all that, so, I didn't have a chance to get around here.
Get some payback. But again, they never could've taken the time to do that to every single person they were putting death on.
It's not clear to me whether Pilate instructed them to do that, or they did that on their own.
They did that on their own. The scourging is what Pilate instructed, and that takes place in his viewing. Perhaps these Romans longed to lampoon Jewish beliefs and customs, and this thoroughly humiliated Jew provides their release. And Bud, I mean Bud could be right in the sense that, since they have, or at least some of them have seen that it's the Jews that seem to be pushing this law, that they might say, "We can get away with this, because nobody's gonna care about this guy." They don't care about him, and we sure don't care about him. As Mark pictures it, it's as if the police circle a hostage kid, whipping him, whipping his head with reeds, spitting on him, and faking his worship. But it does not last long. As they near the main street, the soldiers shrewdly remove from Jesus anything that might suggest royalty to the Jewish mob. Now, whether that was because they thought they might, since they're already, they, the Jews are already angry, that might flame them, or have the reverse thing of, "Those Romans are making fun of us, so now we're going to have to do something about that." But they did this in private. This was mean and spiteful, and it was just for them. It was not like they were trying to make, you know, we use that phrase all the time, "We're gonna make an example of this person." They weren't making an example of him, they were just torturing him. Okay, so that covers verses sixteen through twenty. Any questions up to that point? Okay, obviously, Jesus is not going to make it, so the soldiers arbitrarily grab a shopper to assist him. Many in the church have adorned Simon of Serene for what they construe as a profound act of sympathy. And indeed, depending on what film version you have seen of this, that is often the case, that the heroic Simon, it was, again, back in the Mel Gibson movie, the character of Simon in that movie literally is dragging Jesus and the cross up the hill. That guy's about half-dead by the time he gets there, too. Let's see. This could only, but remember this, Simon did not volunteer himself. He was drafted. He was forced. And it would be insulting to be plucked from the marketplace, maybe even wearing your best garments, and suddenly forced at spear point to join a death march for convicts. Yeah, Simon is not given any option. This could not, this could have only been a huge embarrassment for Simon. So, I know, I've seen these presentations too, folks. It feels so heroic, you know, you can envision yourself being Simon, helping our Lord and Savior drag the cross, helping him, doing whatever you could. Please don't read too much into it. He had to do it, he had no choice in the matter. I'm not sure that he would've been thrilled with this duty, and most assuredly, he would've probably preferred someone else have gotten chosen that day. Whether you're pro-death penalty or anti-death penalty, I'm not sure you want to be the guy that throws the switch. I know I don't. And I just do not even be there. I'm told that people who have witnessed executions, it really affects them later on. No matter, again, no matter what the stance is. So, Simon, very likely, had not made it part of his plan to go out to Galgatha that day. Says, "What we fail to appreciate is-" No, I'm sorry, we've already done that. "No other gospel rends this central moment in history more starkly. Somehow, Mark counters all instinct to embellish." One of the ways he does that is not overloading this narrative with a lot of other type of teaching. Dr. Williamson, who wrote the commentary which this Bible study is based on, said, "This event toward which Mark builds sto- Mark's entire story builds is a narrative, and it comes in just four words. Why is it so powerful?" "They crucified him," where is it? "They brought Jesus to place, then they offered him, he did not take it, and they crucified him." That's not a lot of words, but that's the central moment of this whole thing. "And they crucified him." And again, please remember, they, these are, people are professionals at what they do. And so, you know, there was a period of time in theology of the very early church where they said, "We know Jesus didn't really die. He just kinda swooned, and then he could come out of the cross later." No, they knew how to make people dead. They made him dead, and then he rose. And when it says "they crucified him," now, obviously, it's not completely over at that point. But remember, they know what they're doing, just as surely as the mechanic can fix your car, and the painter can make your house inside and outside look more beautiful. Roman soldiers know how to kill people, and they did, regularly. And they did it again here. Mark tells us the hour. He reminds us of the final mocking inscription, the king of the Jews, as much a mockery of the Jews as of Jesus. And he notes that two bandits were crucified alongside Jesus. But with Mark, there is no last-minute forgiveness, no tenderness towards his mother and beloved John, no earthquake, no conversation with robbers, no parched plea for water, no self-commission to the Father, no pronouncement of the end, no resurrection of the saints, no seven last words. So, all these, a lot of these things that we remember about the crucifixion don't happen in this Gospel. And that's important to remember. And it's also important not to try and force them in and say, "Well, he just left that out." No, he didn't. Remember, he's got a message that he's trying to convey to you. It doesn't mean they did not happen. But to Mark, they are not of central purpose. He is very, he's consistent about that all the way through the Gospel, and he keeps it lean and trim. That's why his is the shortest of the four of them. Look at verse twenty-nine. "Those who passed by hurled insults at him, shaking their heads and saying, 'So you are going to destroy the temple and build it in three days. Come down from the cross and save yourself.'" Who were those passing by? You know, yeah, it doesn't identify them. We don't know. And it almost makes it sound like there's a little parade going by, people coming, stopping long enough to say something ugly, and then move on. Yes?
Just, I heard when I was reading this. I know occasions, in some other countries, they have public executions. It's like a big celebration. People say, "It's a big, it's a big day today, you know, you don't go to work, or skip class. We'll go down to the stadium and watch them execute people."
Yeah.
And that sort of came to mind when I was reading this. It's me going around, watching these people die.
In America, too. In, in America, too. Christie and I went to a museum in, that was built in a jail, or a former jail, in Florida. And they, they had a picture from the last public hanging that was done at that particular jail. And the courtyard was jammed with people. I mean, it was just... But nobody from Jesus' entourage is there. The women are at a distance. You know, anywhere there are Roman soldiers would have been a good place to avoid. So it, it's, it's, it's people who have an axe to grind, and we can name off our own favorite groupings if we want to. But I think Mark's conscious decision to leave them kind of unidentified isn't, isn't unintentional. Because what does it do? Could have been anybody. Could have been me. And they take a twisted statement that Jesus has made and throw it into his face as if that somehow makes them superior. Now, we gently sitting at home can look back in our own calm and serene manner and, and think, oh, how awful of them. But we probably wouldn't have to review our own lives too deeply to see when we have been mean to somebody or someones just for the sake of being mean.
Or watching someone else do it, when you said it's saying nothing.
Yeah, yeah. There's always a difference sitting there between what they did and what I did. I was justified. The picture is a ruthless glimpse into our own propensity to behave like a mob. To make sure we appreciate that mobbishness is not a practice in which only ordinary passersby's engage. Mark relates that the religious leaders of Jerusalem are next in line, verses thirty-one and thirty-two. In the same way, the chief priests and the teachers of the law mocked him among themselves. He saved others, they said, but he can't save himself. Let this Christ, this king of Israel, come down from the cross, that we may see and believe. Those crucified with him also heaped insults on him. Yeah, they're in the same boat with him, but they heap insults on him as well. Now, don't get all, get all exercised here, because we know in another gospel, I believe it's Luke, the one thief does insult Jesus. And, but the second thief seems to say, you know, we deserve what we're getting, but he doesn't, and please remember me, seemed to indicate a belief in Jesus as the Messiah. And that almost surely could have happened. But does it serve the purpose of what Mark is doing here? No. He only remembers the thief that said, you know, well, you're gonna die too, and you think you're so holy, or whatever it was he said. Okay. The two unjustly condemned thieves hanging alongside Jesus, probably nailed with the same wooden matrix of cross. They have, they too have the shame, have the shamelessness to join the cacophony of ridicule. Those crucified with him kept reviling him, the second translation of that. Now, as bad as all that has been, it now gets worse. Mark signals this suffocating moment with three hours of darkness over the whole earth. The starkness of Mark's narrative is especially glaring in the betrayal of Jesus on the cross. The other gospel writers have a variety of last words of Jesus. Luke, Father, forgive them, they do not know what they are doing. John, woman, here is your son, here is your mother. Again, Luke, truly I tell you today, you will be with me in paradise. John, I am thirsty. Luke, Father, into your hands I commend my spirit. John nineteen thirty. It is finished. In Matt, excuse me, in Mark's passage, all we get is verse thirty-four. And at the ninth hour, Jesus cried out in a loud voice, Eloi, Eloi, Lama Salatani, which means, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? Now, I, I've already given you, I think earlier in the study, or maybe it was in the last study, I can't remember. An understand, a general understanding that oftentimes rabbis quoted whole songs by simply quoting the opening verse of a song. And of course, that could be the case here. But Dr. Diver asks us to make another consideration at this point. And y'all, sometimes you just gotta think of this as like trying on hats. You try on several hats at the store, you only buy one. But you do wanna see what you look like in those other ones, right? So think of this as trying on a hat for a moment. Just roll with it, look at it in the mirror. It's also possible that Jesus uses these words to emphasize the solemn beginning of the song, or the, oh, excuse me, that's not what I meant to read. We can argue that Jer-, Jesus meant what he cried or what he meant. But it's possible that he truly and actually felt abandoned.
If you look at it, you know, the physical pain was one thing. But the mental pain, the fact that all the sins of the world were dumped on him at one time, could be excruciating.
He is implying that the physical darkness, which is being described by this gospel writer and other gospel writers, isn't just about the sun not shining on him at that point. That maybe all along, he's had this inner dialogue going on with God, and suddenly, it's quiet. Now, that would be incredibly disturbing. How willing, how obedient are you, my son? We can't know.
Well, I, I had a minister at church, came one time, and said that at that point, when Jesus cried out, he said, God had actually, as a father, had turned his face away and hurt.
One of the, this particular thing, I'm getting ready to read to you, I really like. It says, we can only argue whether at this point, Jesus was crying out as a theologian or a rabbi who says the first line of a song but means the whole thing, or if he is crying out as a victim.
Well, you've done that a lot, haven't you?
Oh, he did.
Yes.
And we don't know. We can't truly know. It says, whether his cry had actually had an objective reference or was pointed back to himself. What Mark is trying to communicate is a kind of knowing available only to the human spirit. All that can be said is that God had tried and failed, and seemingly, nobody cared. He has reached the utter bottom with this statement. I have no problem whatsoever believing that. There's got to be a point where even the Son of God is wondering. And this is not the only one of these we see in this gospel or the others, but this is the most stark moment, the, the very point before his death. When some of those standing near heard this, they said, listen, he is calling Elijah. One man ran, filled a sponge with vinegar wine, put it on a stick, and offered it to Jesus to drink. Now leave him alone. Let's see if Elijah comes down to, comes to take him down, he said. With a loud cry, Jesus breathed his last. Was it just a moan? Was it a scream? Was it words or just noise? Mark doesn't say, but physical life has ended. His physical, human, flesh and blood life has ended. The curtain of the temple was torn in two from top to bottom. We've all heard the implications that this means that God comes out from the inner sanctum, from the Holy of Holies. Or the reverse, meaning that now, through the life, death, and soon-to-be resurrection of Jesus Christ, there is no separation between human beings and God. It's a direct connection. There's no more, you, you've had the high priest you need, Jesus. You no longer need the high priest, who's the only one that can go behind that curtain.
And that's what I've always believed.
Yep. Now comes verse thirty-nine. Here's the part where I step on some toes and probably make some people unhappy. And when the centurion who stood there in front of Jesus heard his cry and saw how he died, he said, surely this man was the Son of God. And you probably have, may have a footnote at that point. Does anybody have a footnote noted on the word "son"?
There's a little funny thing at the beginning of that passage.
What, what does the footnote say?
It's not a footnote, it's just a little, I'm not sure.
Okay, well... Yeah, that's like a paragraph mark. It says what?
For centurions, see the note on Matthew eight five.
Oh, I've got a son, not...
Yes, yes. And, and we're gonna talk about that. So just, just wanted to note that obviously, some Bibles understand there's a problem here. Or not a problem, but just a, listen, I'll say it one more time. Translators, they are my heroes, because they do this stuff, and then they get the blame or the praise. They have to take a language and try and make, turn it into our language, and things lose something in the translation, things gain something sometimes in the translation that they shouldn't. But it, it's, it's a hard job. It's, it's a tough job. There is much ado about this Gentile concluding declaration about Jesus, or his confession of Jesus as the Son of God. Surely this man was the Son of God. Because it seems to tidy up a dreadful scene, it places a bow on it in a way that is uncharacteristic of Mark. We should have learned by now, Mark never leaves the church an easy way out of crisis. And I'm, I'll throw a whole bunch of things out here, and you just latch on to whichever life raft you want to. Greek, like Hebrew, doesn't have... I wish I did an English major. No, it doesn't have... What, what are parentheses, or exclamation points, or even periods? It doesn't have punctuation. Doesn't have punctuation. Now, you, you get a letter from somebody, and they write you, it, it was the greatest day of my life. And then they put an exclamation point at the end of it. What do you discern from that?
That's extremely important.
Yeah, that it was the greatest day of their life. You get a letter that says, it was the greatest day of my life, but this time, instead of an exclamation point at the end of it, they put it in quote marks. What does that mean? Yeah. Wait a minute, wasn't it the same exact words? So what made the difference in English? The punctuation that was used. And now with your phones, people send you pictures, and sometimes you think you know what that picture means. And then later on, you're talking to them and find out, then it's something completely different. That that picture meant something completely different to them than it does to you when you see it. There's no punctuation here along with this statement. In the translation that, that this nice NIV Bible that I've got did, my translator has put an exclamation point at the end of that sentence. Anybody else?
Yeah, I must go to him.
Well, no.
Okay, some did, some didn't. Now, when I read that, it's, it's like, surely this man was the Son of God. But what if, what he said was, this man was the Son of God? Doesn't sound too convincing, does it? There is no punctuation to make that. The canvas Mark has painted is totally dark. We are there, but we are standing in the darkness. The Gentile centurion may not be holding a candle for us. When we examine the centurion's statement more closely, we find that the literal Greek word order of his exclamation is, and before I read this, let me say this. This is the worst way to translate, but, but sometimes it helps you start to get a handle on what the translation should be. So what he has done here has translated the words in the exact order that they come in. But even in English, sometimes, you know, changing the order of words is really important, and you may say something some way, but you mean it another. But here is the order in which the words come. Truly, this man, Son of God, was being. Was being. Truly, this man, Son of God, was being. No punctuation there to help you figure it out. The long and the short of it is, the Greek allows for multiple translations of the centurion's speech. Here are some for you to try on. Surely this man was trying to be the Son of God. That sentence alone leaves to confusion because truly this man was trying to be the Son of God. This man was trying to be the Son of God.
That negates everything that we understand or believe.
Well, it doesn't change it. It's, I think it's just saying that we can't be sure that the centurion is making an affirmative statement here. And if he is, what Dr. Diver is saying is, it suddenly counteracts, it doesn't counteract, but it, it contradicts everything that's come before in this fifteenth chapter. Everybody has been running Jesus in the dirt. I don't mean that ugly. I'm just saying, factually, I can't find anybody in this story that I want to even be associated with, much less, you know how you read a story and you always go, that's me? Yeah, well, you know what I'm talking about, or that's who I'd like to be. We haven't encountered anybody yet that I wanna be, or would even want to admit that I am, even though I am. We haven't encountered anybody yet that I wanna be or would even want to admit that I am, even though I am. Here's another translation. Surely this man was being the Son of God. He was trying. Or the centurion could be possessed with cynicism like the other Romans. Surely this man used to be the Son of God. And of course, finally, surely this man was being the Son of God. Or even as some of your bibles have suggested, a son of God. And there's a whole huge difference between thee and a, isn't there? Okay.
Well, if you dissected everything in the Bible like they do, I mean, couldn't a whole lot of this stuff be switched around and twisted, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not disagreeing with that. What I am saying is, it is often, when we say, you know, this appears in another gospel, the story appears, maybe different words. And there seems to be no doubt, well, less doubt in Matthew's gospel, that this is what the centurion is saying. But he's making the suggestion that Mark's gospel is dark, and he didn't just suddenly throw in this little ray of sunshine to make us feel better. And that's what we've used this story to do, because this is the point. If we go with a positive rendering of this, this is the point where we can say, "There I am. I'm the centurion." I would have been able to look at all this and say, "Truly this man was the Son of God." Would you? He kills people every day. Well, he doesn't kill people.
Like when the darkness in the middle of the day for three hours, and I think that's...
Significant.
I think that's what the centurion was guided by, the fact that, I, yes, he had done this.
It's certainly, it's certainly possible. It is certainly possible. I knew you had your hand up, so. He was what?
He wasn't like a lot of the people back in that day.
Right.
He was very learned, he was intelligent, and for what he experienced on the day of the crucifixion, had to make an impact on it. I mean, by just sitting there listening to what Jesus was saying on the cross, and understanding that here's a man that we've had tortured, we have mutilated him, and what he's saying, he's for the people.
And I have no doubt that as we read the other three gospels, we can see in what they say that what they're trying to get across. The point that Dr. Diver is making is, he thinks the point that Mark is trying to get across is when Jesus went to the cross, he went alone. And it got lonelier every passing moment, to the point where he was completely alone. He has died. Maybe that is a point where you would say, at least one person got it. But he's saying, maybe one person didn't get it. Because as we go on to this next two verses, it's the women, and they're there. But where are they? At a distance. I'm not risking my neck getting up close where people are dying.
Or maybe they wouldn't let them get close.
It's possible. You know, see, and this is a good point to make. When we start doing some of this, what we're doing is giving ourselves a layout. I like this idea that Jesus faces this moment alone. And why? Because he is the only, only one that can face it. He is the only one, you know, just like, remember the story of Peter getting out of the boat and sinking? Why did he sink? Well, that's what we always say. Well, you know why he sank? He wasn't the Son of God. Jesus can walk on water. Peter can't. He didn't know what the, okay.
He did for a ton.
He gets out. Let's just leave it at that. But that's my understanding of that story. Jesus can walk on water, because Jesus is the Son of God. He can, and he is the only one that can go to the cross, withstand all of the humiliation, all of the degradation, and die, and still be willing to rise three days later for me and you and everyone. If anybody else could have done it, they would. Nobody can. That's why it's a once and for all sacrifice. We don't have Jesus die in a physical sense. We don't have Jesus die every year. He died once for all.
But I don't think he went to the cross with those people who were close to him and loved him. I think they were, they were hurt, and they were feeling his pain. I really believe that.
It could have been.
But I think they were intimidated by all of the guards and the scribes and the church leaders and all the...
Yes.
Crowd, and they were just being human. But I think also that the women had to stay at a distance because they were women.
It's very possible.
Women were no better than cattle, and, you know, they were not thought of as really humans.
Yeah, in another gospel, it says, "Disciples stand at a distance." You know, when things are bad, as human beings, there's, there is a feeling of, I'm not sure I wanna get too close to this. We know stuff doesn't spread like that, but we, it's like, I don't, you know, first responders, what do they say is the difference between first responders and everybody else? Everybody else is running away from it, and the first responder runs to them. Jesus is a first responder in healing the sin sickness of the world. I have no doubt everything you're saying is true, but it's like Lorene said, "They were afraid." They were afraid.
Now, when, when is this, the, uh, when a curtain was split, doesn't that bring a real important part of this?
It should have. They were, but not everybody was. Somebody surely saw this of him.
You know, to me, that's, that pins the period all the same.
How, how did they miss all of this, right?
You know what I mean.
Yeah. Okay, so. They are incredibly effective in motivating us, but please remember, movies always take, well, I shouldn't say always, but they have no, they have no problem taking great liberties with things. Mark's primal intention in telling the church of the crucifixion of Jesus Christ is to tell a story of abandonment. Mark wants those professing disciples of Jesus Christ to face their own willingness to abandon God and one another. And in that first century of church, they do this. And we have all these great stories of the martyrs of the early church that gave their lives, but if you had have been compounding books, there were probably more stories of people who denied Jesus in an effort to save their own skin. And we've done this as well. And we weren't even trying to save our lives, we just might have been trying to save face. Karl Barth, one of the greatest theologians in this century, once made an observation that could be characterized as marketing. Rightly understood, there are no Christians. There is only the eternal opportunity of becoming a Christian, an opportunity at once accessible and inaccessible to all. So if you fail in a test of faith, if you want to impress God, just get up and try again. You don't need to mount up counting the failures. If we did, we'd get depressed and just stop altogether, which happened to a lot of the Jews in Jesus' day. But if you're willing to get up and try again, then you're doing the right thing. It was a dark day. But as Tony Campolo used to always say in his lectures, "Sunday's coming." Any questions? Let's bow our heads for a word prayer. Gracious Lord, we thank you for helping us to see, unfortunately, ourselves in this story as well. May we refrain from abandoning and condemning our Lord when it is he who is dying for us. We thank you for this act of obedience, this act of love, this act that has changed all of our lives. It is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Next week, lesson number ten. First eight verses of chapter sixteen. For some of you, it may be the only eight verses that are in your Bible. Just depends on the translation. This one? I'm going to turn off the video.